Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon and welcome to this special meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee on Comprehensive Job Creation Plan. I’m Paul Krikorian, joined by my colleague, Mr. Blumenthal, and we’re ready to begin. Thank you for your patience, council ran a bit late. As this is a special meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee, there will be no general public comment, it has not been agendized today, but we will take comment on, from multiple item speakers, I’d like to invite up first Daniel Gus to speak. Mr. Gus is not in the room. I’d like to invite up Wayne Spindler to speak. Mr. Spindler is not in the room. That will close our comment from multi-item speakers, and that will close comment on items number one and number three. So let’s go ahead and begin with item number one, please.
Item number one, Mr. Chair, CIO and EWDD reports relative to establishment of a jobs and economic development incentive zone policy.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Shafi Amir from the Office of the CIO.
Sam Hughes, Economic Reports Fellow.
Before you, in the August 21 transmittal from EWDD, the department requested approval of their proposed jobs and economic development incentive Jedi Zones establishment policy, a new budget request of 1.5 million, and authority to establish the list of pre-qualified consultants for expedited development approvals, among other actions. On August 28, the committee approved EWDD’s proposed Jedi Zones policy and requested the CIO to report regarding EWDD’s transmittal, including funding and potential impacts. Our office recognizes the importance of the Jedi Zones policy within the framework of the Citywide Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs, and that new economic development initiatives may ultimately require new funding. Specifically, our report before you recommends for EWDD to utilize the fiscal year 2020/21 budget development process to request funds to implement the Jedi Zones policy, as well as resources necessary to implement other tools and initiatives of the SEDs. We also recommend that EWDD work with the departments who have been identified with the various business incentives in the Jedi Zones to establish how these incentives will be implemented, as the specific process has not quite been identified. EWDD’s transmittal discusses providing fee subsidies to the Department of Building and Safety and Department of City Planning on a reimbursement basis. However, the ability of the current permitting system to implement the process this way is not clear. EWDD should work with both departments to establish the procedure. And just want to underline that, we’re not saying it’s impossible, we just want to see that procedure kind of worked out, and how the departments will implement the procedure for the fee reimbursements or the reductions. Also, the basis for the 1.5 million request is not clear regarding the projected impact in the current fiscal year. Including this request in the budget development process for next fiscal year will allow for a review of the Jedi Zones program in the fuller context of other resources necessary to implement the SEDs. The request to approve the use of city-funded consultants to provide services to expedite development permits requires a review of current city services and whether these services are already being provided in the city. Our report recommends EWDD complete the Charter Section 1022 review as required for contracts, so that this can be determined. We also recommend that they discuss with Building and Safety and Planning whether those departments may provide those services as part of the Jedi Zone incentives. And that’s pretty much the gist of my remarks, we can take questions.
All right, thank you very much for that report, and Mr. Harris Tossen has joined us as well, again, council ran a bit late. Thank you for rushing your lunch. Mr. Blumenthal.
Thank you. Came straight, so I apologize, I’ve been eating lunch while I’m sitting up here, I normally don’t do, but went straight from council to committee to another committee, so.
We want you both to maintain your strength.
Right. In terms of the Jedi Zones, do we have any idea of how many zones could be created each year?
That wasn’t identified in EWDD’s transmittal, I think the department had discussed this last time this was discussed, and would defer to Sam Hughes.
Certainly, yeah. Prelimarily, once we roll it out, we’re considering upwards of five zones, possibly, in initiating the program, but much of that depends on staffing.
And the size would be varied, or what would be the average?
The size of the zones certainly will vary. Zones need to meet certain criteria, that’s outlined within the transmittal that went before this body some time ago. I will look to work directly with the council offices as they make motions, essentially instructing the department to move forward and determining the geographic boundaries of any proposed Jedi Zone.
And also, as we look at the zoning, as we look to incentivize activity in these zones, just want to make sure we’re not only looking at the fee subsidies, but we’re looking at other issues like zoning. I mean, you know, we could subsidize expediting parking and all these other things, but it might be a lot faster and cheaper if we just change the parking requirements, or something to that effect. So just want to make sure that that’s part of this process, is that we’re not just methodically going through the fee issue, we’re looking at what is the most effective way to incentivize activity in that zone.
I would simply say that we concur, and that it should be a comprehensive approach to make certain that businesses are able to maximize any efforts that they might have in those particular areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris Tossen? Thank you very much for moving on this and getting us rolling. I think that the Jedi Zone policy, in concert with some of the other policies that have been recommended and approved by this committee, and the SEDs and other things, have a real potential to be game-changing in stimulating economic development, especially in the areas of our city that need it the most. So I appreciate your work on this. And members, there’s a couple of technical changes that I want to indicate, but I also would propose that we move forward with recommendations one through four. I would not ask that we approve recommendation number five because of the implication that funding should wait until the 2021 budget. We’ve waited a long time to develop these policies, and I think we should move more expeditiously than that. So what I’d like to do, instead of recommendation number five, I’d like to ask that the CIO and the CLA continue to work with my office to try to identify potential alternative funding sources and mid-year funding opportunities, so that we can begin work sooner than the 2021 fiscal year, and that those recommendations will come back to this committee for approval, as well as the Budget Committee. So, and then, okay. And then, in terms of the secondary eligibility criteria, there were a couple of tweaks here. I’d like to ask that we amend criteria B to read, quote, “a non-seasonal unemployment rate that is at least 3% higher than the citywide rate.” And I’d ask that we amend criteria C to read, quote, “crime rates 5% higher than the citywide crime rate.” And with those technical.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, that that would be amending the EWDD report?
Yes. So with that, if there’s no objection to proceeding?
No objection.
As indicated, that will be the action of the committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That’ll bring up item number two.
Item number two, Mr. Chair, CLA report relative to the Compete for LA Regional Procurement Portal.
All right, so as staff is coming forward on that, I think, since we have a lot of speakers, I think we should just go ahead and start with our public speakers, because I’m confident that every single one of them is well-versed already in what is about to be presented in the report. So in deference to your time, if you’d like to come up and speak and not stick around, let’s go ahead and start taking some of the speakers. So we’ll start with Lori Tierney, followed by Michael Schillstone, followed by Claudette Moody. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lori Tierney, and I’m President of Tierney Management, and also a native Angelino. I am here today to express my strong support for the Compete for LA Regional Procurement Program. For over 10 years, I’ve owned my own small business, Tierney Management, that has been working to merge marketing, branding, and business management to improve health and sustainability in the built environment. Throughout my career, I have worked with innovative clients, small and large, to improve their practices and successfully retain new business partners. My business and those of my clients can benefit from a portal that unifies opportunities in one location. Nothing is more important to a small business than time, especially a small woman-owned minority enterprise. By providing a one-stop shop, small business will be able to both find opportunities and receive any financial or especially technical assistance.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, I’m Michael Schillstone with Central City Association. We’re strongly supportive of LABC’s Compete for LA Regional Procurement proposal to create a portal focused on small minority-owned and disadvantaged businesses. LA is undergoing an unprecedented amount of investment in public infrastructure with initiatives like Measure M and major sporting events like the 2028 Olympics. Our public and private leaders have the chance to ensure that the benefits of these considerable investments extend to every Los Angeles community. We should learn from London, where their regional procurement platform built for the 2012 Olympics achieved over 200,000 businesses registered, with more than 75% of contracts awarded to small and medium businesses. LA should replicate this model to take advantage of this momentum and historic investment in our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Claudette Moody, followed by Robert Saucedo, Bob Graziano, and Antonio Manning. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Claudette Moody, and I’m a Director of Government Relations for the Southwest District at WSP. WSP is one of the world’s leading professional services firms. You know us, we do a lot of work in Los Angeles and for Metro as well. And WSP supports the Compete for LA program. From the very beginning of this feasibility study, WSP has recognized the value of creating a single, one-stop-shop private and public procurement program for small disadvantaged women and minority businesses, in support of efforts for the Olympics and beyond. Throughout our work with, throughout Los Angeles County, we make it a priority to procure and contract with small disadvantaged women and minority businesses to support our work. Our own mentor protege program provides mentorship training and support to local small businesses we partner with to grow their impact and capabilities. The program outlined in Compete for LA would augment our program and be immensely helpful for large firms like ours to seek partnerships with those firms. Compete for LA can be an important part of the Olympics legacy as well. We urge your support.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, my name, council members, my name is Robert Saucedo, I’m the President and CEO of Community Build Inc., located in La Merde Park of our great city. I’m here today to speak in support of Compete for the, Compete for LA program. Community Build is a nonprofit organization with the mission of revitalizing low-income communities in South Los Angeles through human capital investment, community economic development, and commercial economic development. For 27 years, we have led community efforts to support and grow local South LA businesses to promote greater community-wide gains. I was an early and ongoing supporter of Compete for LA proposal, beginning in my time as Deputy for Agency and Review for LA County Supervisor Mark Really Thomas’s office. For those who have had any experience with public procurement, you know, the process can be cumbersome and difficult to navigate. Additionally, understanding the broad spectrum of supply chain management, from the supplier to the contracted organization to the end-user, is even more difficult. Our small businesses don’t have the luxury of time and have historic barriers they must already overcome to remain profitable, viable, and a source of jobs. So we hope you stand with us and support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Bob Graziano, I’m the Chair of the Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment Commission. Throughout my career, I’ve helped attract and organize many major events to Los Angeles and seen firsthand the positive impacts that they can have. The Major League Baseball All-Star Game, the Super Bowl, the College Football Championships, the U.S. Open, and the World Cup are events that we’re proud to host in the near future. And I’m confident that we will work to ensure they leave a positive lasting impact on the greater Los Angeles community. These events have the potential to deliver a powerful stimulus to the local economy, but that by no means is a given. At the Sports and Entertainment Commissions, we approach these decisions with a sense of responsibility to the people and well-being of this city, and the understanding that these events put us in the national spotlight, actually in the global spotlight. We want to make sure the positive economic impact reaches everyone, especially small minority and women-owned businesses. And with the multiple events coming to Los Angeles, we hope we can capitalize using it, Compete for LA.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Antonio Manning, followed by John Vane, Gene Hale, Shanae Rourke, and Mark Morales.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Antonio Manning, President and CEO of Affordable Living for the Aging. As an early supporter and funder of Compete for LA, I’m here to speak in support of the program. Affordable Living for the Aging is a leading nonprofit affordable housing provider for homeless and at-risk seniors in Los Angeles, and we know all too well that income equality is a major driver of our current affordable housing crisis in the region. Compete for LA would address this inequity by leveling the playing field when it comes to procurement opportunities for small and diverse-owned businesses. This will also help drive economic development and wage growth in some of our most diverse and historically disadvantaged communities. Every dollar that stays local can work to increase wages and hire new employees. For these reasons, I urge the committee to support the creation of a public-private 501(c)(4) entity that creates a robust regional supply chain inclusion program, and continues to allow small businesses to grow and expand, and allow those owners to hire new employees and continue their contribution to LA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is John Vane, I’m President of the LA Convention, the Center, and Tourism Development Board. Our mission at Convention and Tourism is to drive economic development and create jobs by increasing the competitiveness of Los Angeles as a convention and tourist destination. As we pursue these goals, it’s really important that we, the primary beneficiary are local, small, and diverse businesses, and Compete for LA can be a landing pad to take the friction out of working with smaller businesses. Rather than reinventing the wheel each and every time we have a new event or convention come in, this is a place that can drive impact on the community, and that’s why I support Compete for LA. What made the UK so successful was a shift in prime culture partnerships and developed throughout the small business community, and by creating a support staff to go out and educate the small businesses about this platform, we hope that we can replicate what they’ve done in the UK, where we have, they have close to a quarter of a million small businesses. And a 501(c)(4), we think, is the most effective approach, so that’s why I support it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gene Hale. I’m Chairman of the Greater Los Angeles African American Chamber of Commerce, one of the largest African-American chambers in the country, and also President of GNC Equipment Corporation, a company that’s engaged in the sale and procurement of construction equipment, material, and supplies. The Chamber has for years advocated and promoted the economic growth and development of the African-American business community. We have been spearheading the support of African-American business enterprise in the Los Angeles community through a variety of programs and services, including ensuring minority-owned businesses have a fair shot at procurement opportunities. I’m here today to speak in support of the Compete for LA program as a tool to further this effort. Compete for LA takes the benefit of a regional procurement system and combine it with a targeted community engagement plan that would allow us to have an immediate impact on the minority business community, and by opening up lower-tier supply chain opportunities, we can truly reach out to target these communities. I thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Shanae Rourke, followed by Mark Morales, Mary Leslie, when I have Mark Morales and Shanae Rourke again, so we’ll have Brad Cox as well.
Does that mean I get two minutes? Good afternoon, council members. My name is Shanae Rourke, and I am the immediate past President of the National Association of Women Business Owners Los Angeles Chapter, and also on the Board of Directors for Navo, California. For the past 10 years, I also own a procurement strategies firm, and since the 1980s, I was two, I was part of what, before Prop 209, worked intimately with Mebee Weebies, what we called them at that time. In addition to my company’s work in procurement, I sit on public agency councils that advise public agencies on their SBE and DBE goals, including Chair of the Business Advisory Council at Metro. I am here today to speak in support of the Compete for LA program. National Association of Women Business Owners Los Angeles is one of our nation organizations leading and most innovative chapters since 1979. Historically, women-owned and minority-owned businesses have represented a minor fraction of the awarded opportunities within the city of LA. But with over 500, thank you. I have another minute, don’t I?
Thank you, yeah, very nice. But I’ll tell you what, Shanae, I look forward to working with you to get Metro engaged.
And we would love to, thank you.
All right. Mr. Morales?
Yeah, if I can submit this for the council members. I’m Mark Morales, President Emeritus of the Los Angeles Gay and Lesbian Chamber of Commerce, and a small business owner. There are two main issues when discussing procurement from small and diverse-owned businesses. How do I find qualified small and diverse businesses to buy from, and how do those businesses find out about opportunities to bid on before they are awarded? Compete for LA solves both these issues by providing a free regional procurement platform that connects buyers and suppliers in the Los Angeles area that can be utilized by both public and private projects. We see from the success of the CPUC Supplier Clearinghouse that having opportunities in one place makes them easier to find, and from the California Department of Insurance, that transparent reporting of the spend on small and diverse-owned suppliers can increase that spend even without goals and mandates. We support the compete, complete, Compete for LA project as a way for our businesses to be included in the growth of the Los Angeles region.
Well done.
Wow.
Ms. Leslie?
Good afternoon, and thank you for your leadership, Chairman Paul Krikorian and the other committee members. We’re excited to be here with over 40 other entities today who all share the common belief that we can do it better. And AEG, the LA Rams, the LA Dodger, the LA Sports and Entertainment Commission, many prime providers and small businesses support Compete for LA. And the reason is because there are models that have worked, and we should try to emulate them. We’ve spent two years now researching and building a coalition, because we think it’s highly desirable for us to do more. The historic amount of public and private spend puts us in a position to maximize this for local small businesses. Compete for is not just a digital system, it’s an idea, that you can have a regional clearinghouse with available contracting opportunities for both public and private sector. This needs to combine with a community engagement program dedicated to creating equity and opportunities for small and diverse businesses. A special thanks to our partners at USC Peer, especially the Director Jennifer Ito that’s with us today, who will present these ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Brad Cox, I’m the Senior Managing Director of Trammell Crow Company and the Chairman of the Los Angeles Business Council Institute. The LABC Institute established the Compete for LA program and conducted the feasibility study with really one goal in mind, and that’s to provide local, small, and diverse businesses a fair shot at contracting opportunities. Small businesses, as we know, are the backbone of our economy, and every opportunity and job we can create for them only helps us here in the city as a whole. The regional approach aligns directly with the goals laid out in the Citywide Economic Development Study. When we aggregate lower-tier supply chain opportunities, we can truly remove the real and perceived barriers that for so long have kept small businesses out of the public realm. Every project we develop, we have an aggressive outreach program to ensure that we include small businesses, community partners, local and disadvantaged hire programs. That’s why we strongly support this program, we realize how difficult it is. Compete for LA will allow us to have greater access and improved communication with local small businesses, labor, and suppliers, ensuring that our projects provide the economic enrichment for the Los Angeles city and its employees.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker will be Joss Tillard Gates, followed by Daniel Gus, followed by Carolyn Hull, and Will Wright. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Joss Tillard Gates, I’m the Senior Director of Policy and Enterprise Community Partners for Southern California. And Enterprise Community Partners is an affordable housing nonprofit that’s invested over $45 billion, with a B, in affordable housing nationally, with over about one and a half of that being in Southern California region since 1997. The reason that I’m here today to support Compete for LA is because we understand affordable housing and housing in general to be the hub of what makes communities thriving and great, but economics is certainly, and economic development is a spoke of that hub. And so we cannot have these thriving communities, and our investment is for naught if we do not lift up our small businesses and support economic development. So I hope you join me in support for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Carolyn Hull, and I’m the Vice.
I’m sorry, one moment, there’s noise coming from the back. Please, if you want to have a conversation, go outside. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Carolyn Hull, and I’m the Vice President of Industry Cluster Development at the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation. LADC works with businesses, education, and government partners to advance opportunity and prosperity for LA residents through fostering growth of well-paying jobs in key industries. I’m here to speak today in support of Compete for the LA, Compete for LA program. For years, LADC has pushed for increased business development and investment opportunities in key regional industry clusters to promote local prosperity. Compete for LA will provide a tool that will create greater communication with, and access to targeted industries that will be utilized most for upcoming events and public procurements. And to develop a robust database, it must include private sector supply chain opportunities. By connecting local businesses to regional procurement opportunities, the Compete for LA program would greatly expand economic development for countless local small businesses and their employees.
Thank you.
Afternoon.
After Mr. Wright will be Theodora Oye, Delver Richardson, and Wayne Spindler.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is William Wright, I work for the American Institute of Architects here in Los Angeles, and I want to share our strong support for the Compete for LA initiative. I want to thank the Los Angeles Business Council Institute and your leadership. Two things I can sort of bring to the table that maybe are new for this conversation in my 42 seconds left, is that, one, once you establish the nonprofit, look at how we can expand it to be oriented towards greater cultural inclusion, because we have a lot of work to do between now and 2028. We have a ton of placemaking work, and we need to include neighborhoods and artists in ways that Compete for LA and platforms like that can achieve greater inclusion. Also, I’d look to see how you can integrate this with the efforts of LA County. We are in LA County, and they’re a great leader, and they’re putting together the One LA Regional Collaborative, and I would really like to see these two initiatives fit together smartly. Thank you.
Thank you. So I still have Theodora Oye and Delver Richardson?
Yeah.
Come on up, Mr. Spindler, go ahead.
Delver Richardson Price in the house. So, what have we got here? This is the biggest room full of losers in the history of America. Look at a black man turn his head when I address the issue.
Speak tight, number two, you’re disrupting the meeting.
We have nothing to blame but ourselves, losing the charges, losing the Rams, and losing the opportunity to bring the Angels here. Why? Because of you motherfuckers.
This has nothing to do with, stick tight, number two, you’re disrupting the meeting.
I talks about the plan about compete shit for fucking LA da original, and what a failure it’s going to be. It’s going to be a continual failure. Black people never get hired in this plan. It’s going to be nothing but a portal of bullshit like usual, and I agree with Marquis Harris, fuck all you white devil motherfuckers, and bring back the jobs of South Central.
You’re done, Mr. Spindler. Have a seat and remain silent throughout the meeting. All right, I have Theodora Oye, Delver Richardson, and Carolyn Hull already spoke, right?
Yes.
Go right ahead. And I’m, my apologies for those of you who don’t frequently come to council meetings. This is a regular occurrence at, I kid you not, every single council meeting and every single committee meeting, we get this performance art that we get to enjoy. I apologize, because it’s patently offensive to every civilized human being, but this is what we have to deal with. So go right ahead, man.
Thank you. My name’s Theodora Oye, and I’m the Senior Manager of Community Engagement at Hathaway Dinwiddie Construction. And Hathaway Dinwiddie is a major general contractor in the region. And I’m here to support Compete for LA, because as the previous speakers, the previous supporters of the initiative indicated, this opportunity, this program, this portal, is extremely transformative for the region, and so I want to commend the committee, as well as the city, I mean, the leadership of both groups for the foresight to even the leadership of both groups for the foresight to even think this up and do it before all the opportunities are gone. So the foresight and the opportunities to actually see to it that the region benefits are historic, I'm excited to be part of it, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody who is going to make it happen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, is there anybody else here who wish to speak on item number two? All right, very good, then we'll go ahead, and thank you all very much for your comments, and we'll proceed next to our presentation by the USC Program for Environmental and Regional Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We have our presentation here. My name's Jennifer Ete, I'm the Research Director with the USC Program for Environmental Regional Equity, and I'm joined here by my colleague and one of the co-authors, Arpana Sharma. We are excited to be able to come back and present some of the key findings of our research, where we've been looking at how we can really leverage some of these major events to be a major driver for equitable economic development in Los Angeles County as a whole, and in particular, how this procurement and contracting opportunities can really be leveraged to both generate economic growth, but also to address poverty and to address the growing economic inequality in our region. So the specific research question that we were asked to look at is to drill down into the neighborhoods and the type of industries that can be targeted for small business assistance. And so we did our thing, we looked up both publicly available data, private data, as well as literature and interviews, many of the folks in this room as well, and kind of what we've distilled is actually developing a typology of three different types of neighborhoods in Los Angeles that we call investment-ready. So we looked at three different types of criteria. One is looking at where are there high needs, where are there pockets of poverty, where we have high income inequality, high poverty neighborhoods, renters, people of color. So we looked at where are those areas where we have opportunities to stimulate equitable economic growth. Then we looked at where there are opportunities to stimulate more small business development and employment. And so we looked at those areas in which receive kind of less than the median for the county of business lending per people. And then we also took into account where are there high opportunities, because we do want there to be investment-ready places. So we looked at places that either have high levels of employment-ready folks with a bachelor's degree or higher, or where there are some kind of assistance programs like Promise Zones, HUD Zones, where there are also, where there are concentrated efforts to generate economic development in those areas. So based on those criteria, we developed three different types of neighborhoods that tie to different strategic interventions and investments needed. So one tier is just information short. So these are neighborhoods that have high, that have high levels of small business employment existence, where there are lots of either employment-ready or programs that are ready to invest in these neighborhoods, where if there were an online portal, kind of just being able to advertise, get the word out, may increase the successful connection of businesses to those opportunities. The second tier of census tracts and neighborhoods we've identified are those that we're calling opportunity-rich. And those are the ones where we feel like, yes, they need the advertisement, but also more, more one-on-one outreach, more mentorship, more targeted programs that are needed to overcome some of the structural barriers that keep small businesses from leveraging these opportunities. And then thirdly, there are a set of census tracts and neighborhoods that we call equity-ready, and these are neighborhoods in which we see opportunities to develop, to bring together the full resources of the Economic Workforce Development Department, all the public and private programs, to really bring together wraparound services, both for the employers and small businesses, but also for the workers to be able to connect to those opportunities. So this is what it looks like as a map. You'll find it in our report that we're releasing today. This is a sample of where the information short neighborhoods are. They account for about 8% of census tracts in the county and about, let me see, about 750,000 people reside in these neighborhoods. And the second thing that I should add is that we focused on those census tracts that have a lot of people, so we didn't look at census tracts where there aren't a lot of people. The second tier, this is the opportunity-rich, this accounts for about 2.9 million people. It accounts for 80% of the census tracts. And then lastly, these are the equity-ready, that account for about 4% of the census tracts that we looked at, about 412,000 people. Lastly, what we did was also look at job-rich census tracts. So this is where we looked at census tracts that have above the median employee, number of employees working in small businesses, and for the purposes of this report and this analysis, we define that as people working at an establishment with less than 20 employees, so that we could overlay this. So this is just an example of some of the analysis that we have, that we hope can be a resource as you're considering the contours of such a program like Compete for L.A. This is, for example, we zeroed in on a neighborhood in Pacoima, so you can see one of these census tracts, we have the statistics up there, I won't read them off, but we have, we've focused in the report on five different neighborhoods where we see opportunities for both generating economic growth and addressing inequality. So Pacoima, South L.A., this is an example of a census tract in a neighborhood that's both job, that's both opportunity-rich, has equity-ready neighborhoods, and also are This is an example in East Los Angeles, Pico Union, MacArthur Park, and Harbor areas. So I think this is just to say that there are targeted strategies that we think can be employed, and we're happy to be able to share some of this data and analysis. The other analysis that we did was to look at the particular industries where there are businesses, and so this is a graph of eight different industries that we identified that could benefit from the different procurement opportunities coming online over the next several years. So they include construction, manufacturing, wholesale trade. You'll see the middle bar, that's actually retail trade, transportation, warehousing, information, professional scientific and technical assistance services, and then accommodation and food services. So we know that a lot of the major events that we're planning to use already are constructed, so we looked at a broader set of industries that could benefit. And so you'll see again here, we have kind of the number of businesses that fall within those different neighborhood types by industry. So we are happy to be a resource. We have other reports and other data and analysis as well, and I just want to thank all of those who we interviewed and helped inform this, as well as the Los Angeles Business Council Institute, who have given us this opportunity. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Members, questions for Mr. Blumenthal?
Just more of a comment. I enjoyed the presentation and appreciate how far we've gotten to this point. I really view the regional procurement portal as, such as Compete for L.A., as complementary to our need to improve our own procurement process, and I don't think that we should wait until we fix our own problems before moving forward with a Compete for L.A. solution.
Here.
But we can't pretend that Compete for L.A. is the solution to all of our problems either. We have to do both. We have to do everything, and we have a lot, a lot of other work to do, and this committee is taking on a lot of that. I know you have some recommendations which, looking at, I support and just want to move forward as fast as we can.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Ristos.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And thank you for bringing this very cogent and timely study to us and the thoroughness with which you approach the work. Just a general question to you all, you've looked at this data, you've seen the picture. What are your sort of top-line recommendations for us as the sort of smart way to respond to this report?
Mm-hmm. I mean, I think that, I would, I think that there would be benefits to being able to use your perspective here within the city and the great work you've already done around some of the public procurement programs and systems you've put in place, but to really think about how can you build something regional that's going to capture both the public and the private sector opportunities. And so I think if there's some way that you can help share the lessons that you have to other jurisdictions, but also in some way be able to contribute to a broader regional approach that can capture, what I failed to mention is that there are about 50,000 businesses that we've identified in those neighborhoods, which just, I think, in your current system, it's just 1,000, or there's just a very small percentage of those that have been able to get through the full certification process to access the opportunities through the city. So that's just one thing that I would advise you to take a much more regional approach, because that is the way that the businesses are thinking. They're not thinking by individual jurisdiction and the power of being able to leverage your resources and the full leverage, the full resources here in Los Angeles County.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the CLA to come on up now, and you can stay, just in case there's further questions, but we can have the CLA come and present on their analysis and recommendations. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Andy Galan with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. So the report before you is relative to the, to the assessment of the potential governance structure of the benefits of and of the potential budgetary needs for implementation of the Compete for L.A. regional procurement portal. As you've heard, Compete for L.A., as described in the feasibility study, proposes the creation of a regional procurement portal for the Los Angeles region, which would advertise contract opportunities hosted by both the public and private sectors. Compete for L.A. also proposes that the portal be targeted to engaging small and underserved businesses, and it would include support functions such as a help desk, technical assistance, and an outreach team. According to the city attorney's analysis, neither the 501(c)(4) nor a joint powers authority, the suggested structures by the feasibility report, are compatible with the functions proposed by Compete for L.A. A 501(c)(4) social welfare organization would be a potentially viable governance structure to contract with the city if the city elects to participate in a regional procurement portal. In this case, the city would then have to go through an open and competitive bid process for the provision of a regional portal, and RFP would also allow the city to set the scope and priorities of that contract. The implementation of a regional procurement portal would benefit the city by providing the ability to reach an increased number of suppliers and would expose city contracting opportunities to suppliers not previously aware of those opportunities. This would result in a potential diversification of suppliers, which may result in more competitive pricing and service provision. Increased exposure may also result in new relationships formed between prime contractors and subcontractors. The support functions included in Compete for L.A. align with the city's small business policy objectives, as stated in the jobs plan and in the SEDs. They would provide additional services to small businesses, as well as contribute to the engagement of small business in the procurement process. The supply chain tracking and reporting could also help track useful information which could serve to inform additional strategies to engage small business. Suppliers would benefit from a regional procurement portal by having multiple governmental agencies contracting opportunities posted in a single location. This would reduce the duplication of effort and would especially benefit small businesses which do lack the capacity to search multiple portals for contracting opportunities. The small business assistance aspects of Compete for L.A. may contribute to increased knowledge and expertise of governmental procurement processes among small business and could help to increase the number of certified businesses in the region. Compete for L.A.'s proposal to host private sector contracts would expose contracting opportunities of notable events such as the World Cup, Super Bowl, and the 2028 Olympics to small business. Compete for L.A. regional procurement could be considered an additional tool for the, for city procurement, but would not address the barriers to small business currently present within the city's procurement process. While Compete for L.A. would help small business locate opportunities, it would not necessarily help them win those contracts. A regional portal would be most effective at a time when barriers to small businesses are addressed. According to the feasibility study, the startup cost for the establishment of Compete for L.A. is estimated at $4,250,000 over a period of four years. The first year, which includes planning and setup, would cost $1,250,000. The subsequent three years of operations would each, are each projected to cost $1 million annually. The CAO is able to, unable to complete a full evaluation of the budgetary resources necessary for implementation at this time. Additional information is required to provide an accurate estimate. The cost of implementation would vary depending on factors such as participating agencies and the volume of users. Additional information is also needed to establish the feasibility of sustainability through value-added services as proposed by Compete for L.A.
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
Uh, addition, the addition, I'm sorry. Additional information would be needed to establish the feasibility of the sustainability through value-added services that the Compete for L.A. feasibility study proposes. Because the scope of work is unknown, as well as operational details, it is also not possible to determine if the city would be required to expend resources related to participation in Compete for L.A. Due to the likely substantial contributions expected for establishment costs, the participation of other agencies would affect any contribution needed from the city to establish a Compete for L.A. 501(c)(4) organization. At this time, no other governmental agency has indicated intent to participate in Compete for L.A. If the council would like to participate in a regional procurement portal, the appropriate city department should be directed to work with the county and other regional governmental agencies to align objectives, support the development of 501(c)(4) entity, and develop procedures to most efficiently post opportunities to that portal. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Members, questions for the CLA? I think that what we've done with L.A. BAVN is a good start, but obviously there are tremendous barriers, as Mr. Blumenthal alluded to earlier, with participation there. I think broadening and creating a regional tool like this is going to help, it's not mutually exclusive of fixing the other barriers that we have with city procurement, but by casting a wider net, presenting a wider range of opportunities, many more businesses that might be eligible for certification but can't quite get the, don't have the wherewithal to quite get that done, don't have the time, don't have the funds, don't have the information to be able to get that done, can still fully participate, and even within the private, entirely private sector supply chain, there are going to be opportunities for some of these businesses and for their, and for their principles to be able to, you know, prime contractors and so on, to embrace them, it seems to me, even without any government procurement. There's going to be incentivization to do that, if there's just an opportunity to bring them together. So I'm really excited about this opportunity. I think we do have to integrate this with BAVN, but not have BAVN be a gateway through which, you know, entry into the broader tool is necessary. So what I'd like to suggest is, I want to, I don't want a lot of reports back, I don't want a lot more analysis of this, because I think, you know, we all kind of get the idea and we want to get moving. So, but, at the same time, I want to make sure that all of our city departments are giving us what we need to appropriately implement it, as you've indicated. So I'd like to recommend that we continue to consider this item, we hold it in committee, and I'd like to request ITA, the procurement officer, BCA, and the city attorney's office to report back to this committee on the feasibility and funding needs to provide regional contracting software that would allow participation from certified and non-certified businesses, as well as private and public sector contractors. So, and I'd like to get that report back. I think we can get that back in 90 days. I'd like to get that back in 90 days. Make a change in that, Julia, make that 90 days. Second, I'd like to request that the procurement officer, BCA, ITA, and the city attorney's office, in conjunction with the Sport and Entertainment Commission, develop an issue in RFI within 60 days and report back with the results of that RFI within 120 days. And that RFI should include key elements of the Compete for L.A. program. And that RFI should include key elements of the Compete for L.A. program, including a centralized digital platform, public-private governing board, as well as a marketing outreach and onboarding program for small businesses. Third, I'd like to request that the procurement officer, BCA, ITA, and the city attorney's office work with other government agencies and private contractors to assess their interest in participating in and jointly funding a regional procurement organization, and report back with recommendations on the establishment and budgetary needs of a 501(c)(4) to implement that program. And I think we can ask that that come back in 90 days as Any questions, concerns about that? Yes?
Councilmember Dan Cryer, bring office of the city attorney. There was just a misstatement earlier, I believe, about the 501 -- he meant to say 501(c)(3) was not feasible versus a 501(c)(4), which was further stated.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yes. We got that in the written report. Thanks for the clarification. Good to have it on the record. All right, members, any questions, concerns about the recommendations as stated? Okay, if there's no objection, then that will be the action of the committee. So thank you all very much. Thank you all for coming down, and thanks for driving this forward. And that will bring up item number three.
Item number three, CLA report to the citywide bid preference programs and first-source
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Brian Randall with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst.
Sorry, one second. Let's just give it a second to let the room clear. Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Brian Randall with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. And with me at the table is Linda McGlinchey of the Bureau of Contract Administration. Before you is a report from our office in response to council instruction of July 3, 2018, where the council instructed the CLA to work with -- to, excuse me, to report with recommendations to update the Transitional Jobs Opportunities Program and First Source Hiring Ordinance. In a related action on May 9 of 2019, the council approved various modifications to the local business preference program and the small local business program, which were requested as part of the comprehensive job creation plan approved by the council. The Transitional Job Opportunities Program, Local Business Preference Program, and Small Local Business Program are procurement programs administered by BCA. These programs provide bid preferences to businesses located within Los Angeles County that bid on city contracts. The First Source Hiring Ordinance is also administered by the BCA, as well as the Economic and Workforce Development Department. The First Source Ordinance differs from the programs mentioned a moment ago in that the First Source Hiring Ordinance does not offer a bid preference, but is a requirement for all contractors who engage with business with the city. BCA reports that these programs historically have been underutilized or have not been used at all. Because increasing local business participation in city contracts and increasing employment for transitional workers are priorities for the council, our report provides recommendations to restructure the programs. During the preparation of our report, we consulted with the BCA, city attorney, chief procurement officer, EWDD, council districts 2 and 15, and the mayor's office on these proposed changes. For the Transitional Job Opportunities Program, Local Business Preference Program, and Small Local Business Program, we recommend the following. Number one, that these programs be combined into a single program to be renamed the Local Business Preference Program. Number two, increase the Transitional Job Opportunities Program contract threshold from 100,000 to 150,000. Three, allow businesses and local subcontractors additional opportunities to qualify for bid preferences. Four, instruct the Board of Public Works to develop and implement an outreach plan. And five, revise criteria for businesses to qualify for these certifications as needed. Turning to the First Source Hiring Ordinance, first recommendation is we recommend that BCA be instructed to clarify guidance to EWDD on procedures after receiving an employment opportunity. Require EWDD to change the period from seven to 14 days for the submittal of an employment opportunity. And three, instruct BCA to increase partnerships with other city departments, including training. Our office recommends approval of these modifications and that the city attorney be requested to repair and present the necessary ordinances. We further recommend that the BCA be instructed to report to council in six months with a status update on implementation of the revised programs, including additional recommendations as appropriate, and that such an update be provided annually in future years. Subsequent to the release of our report, EWDD and BCA requested that recommendation to be of our report be deleted and that be replaced with the following instruction, which I will read into the record. Instruct BCA and EWDD to explore ways to automate the referral process. And I believe BCA has a couple of amendments that they would like to read into the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The first thing we just wanted clarification on with regards to the recommendations, that the following modifications to the local business preference program, small local business program, and Transitional Job Opportunities Program, that's page two, item one, CI, states that if the business submitting a proposal holds a small -- it should be small local business enterprise certification, not small, there's definite difference, and we want to make sure we're addressing the correct people. And then, secondly, with regards to the TJOP, the current ordinance lists TJOPs as being local to the state, and we would like that change to local to the county to be consistent with all of our other local programs.
And that concludes our report, and we can answer any questions you may have.
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks for digging into this and being so thorough in your report back, because each of these is a great program. They're all underutilized, and I think integrating them this way and polishing them up and fixing a few things that needed fixing is going to be a significant step forward. And it's going to make marketing this a lot easier, too, because I think right now there's just so much confusion, especially amongst small businesses, as to which is the right thing to pursue, and can you get both, and to what extent do they overlap. It's still amazes me that some of these have been in place for so many years now, and such a wide swath of businesses have -- and even Chambers have never heard of this, never heard of these. And, you know, that's a -- that is an indicator to me that we need to do a much more effective job of outreach and marketing these programs in a consolidated way. With a single program, it's going to be a heck of a lot easier, I think. So I appreciate the recommendations very much. Mr. Harris-Poston, did you --
Also, you know, I associate myself with the comments of the chair, and I'm very grateful to you all. This is a really, really big deal. It's one of the more difficult and challenging things to help businesses in the district access the labyrinth of city programs that there are. You know, just a week and -- two weeks ago, we were with a business, a luxury furniture manufacturing, who happens to be located to our bridge housing program, that wants to hire people in the bridge housing program, and we can't -- we're like fumbling around trying to figure out what program works for that. And it seems like that should be the most obvious thing and the most available thing. And so this moves the ball forward in that regard and makes the picture a lot clearer, I think, to everyday people doing the work. So thank you.
Mr. Blumenthal?
I want to echo the comments of my colleagues. Thrilled about this. I did have a technical question. The First Source Hiring Ordinance, it sounded like you said it was going to -- the recommendation was to go to 14 days, but I thought that BCA and EWDD recommended seven days, because the 14 days was too onerous for businesses, potentially small businesses, which made sense to me to keep it at seven, per their recommendations. So it's unclear to me. What's in -- what are we moving forward on this? 14 or seven?
We suggest that that recommendation be deleted, so we would keep the seven, and then that would be replaced with a new recommendation, which was instruct BCA and EWDD to explore ways to automate the referral process.
Got it. So keeping it at seven. Okay. For some reason, in all the readings, it twisted me around a little bit. Great. I think that's the right thing to do. And then just the one thing I want to throw out there is, love the preferences for small businesses that -- one of the big problems that I hear about, and I've mentioned this before in these hearings, which is not addressed by this, is the amount of time that it takes for us to pay invoices.
Yes.
Because that, I talked to a lot of small businesses, and that is the biggest block that they have for doing business with the city. That alone, in my mind, is worth all -- if we could solve that, that's worth more than all these preferences and all these programs that we have. And what kills me is that that's so doable. And it doesn't require a lot of education for people. Word will spread that we pay our bills, just like word spreads now that we don't. So I don't know how to put this into this, if it fits into this at all, but I just want to raise it again and try to prioritize it, or if there's a way to make a recommendation that that be part of this in some way, I want to do it.
Could we ask for a report back? Because I know Mr. Reamer addressed this when he took the post, and I -- it would be great if we could hear back on where he is.
Yeah, and I raised it last time, so is it maybe legitimate in the conversation now? I don't know, but Reamer wants to speak about it.
It's not on the agenda, but it is somewhat tangentially related to what we're talking about. But I do see that Mr. Reamer is agreeing with our comments from the third row. So I think we have every opportunity to pursue this even before the next meeting of this committee. Maybe we can do that offline and have a report agendized then for next meeting so that we would be able to come up with some recommendations for how we might be able to advance that forward. Anything else on this matter?
No.
All right. Well, then, with that, if there's no other suggestions or questions, as amended, as indicated, it will be the action of the committee, if there's no objections, to adopt the CLA report as amended. All right. Thank you very much. And there being no other business before the committee, we are adjourned.